So can we get out of here? Oh, my. Let's call it a day. I'd like to read the recording. Stay there. This meeting has been recorded. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, anyone who wishes to make an audio recording of this meeting must first know by the chair. Please raise your hand and make your presence known if you intend to report this meeting.
Terry, so I just want to make sure I can hear it back. Doing.
Is that all right? It's being recorded. Okay, the meeting is being recorded. Okay. For the meeting's purpose tonight, I'd like to make a statement. First off, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight and to acknowledge that you are here because you want to ensure that everything possible is being done to protect your kids. We realize the whole weight of our responsibility for doing whatever we can to keep your children safe. Here's the situation we find ourselves in. While law enforcement works to protect an individual's legal rights, a school system needs to protect a student's legal and privacy rights. We cannot deviate from the meeting structure that has been our past practice because it could be perceived as providing a forum that could potentially violate a student's rights. We have sought and received advice on this topic from our legal counsel as well as our field agent from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. By definition and structure, our special meetings and workshops do not include public comment. We cannot simply call an emergency meeting for the sole purpose of hearing public comments because we have not done so in the past. The only forum that we have legal control over is what is said at our regularly scheduled school committees, which are posted well in advance. As I said, any deviation from our past practice could be construed as providing an opportunity to violate due process and privacy laws of students. That's why we could not hear your public comment at our bowls meeting on September sixteenth, and that's why we cannot hear your public comment tonight. But we are listening. We are pleased believe we read every email you send us. We take it to heart and we encourage you to keep them coming. Thank you for all your patience, civility, and understanding. Okay. With that said, I will turn the floor over to our superintendent, who is going to begin tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Terry. Before we begin the presentation, I just, I want to say a few words too. I'd like everyone to know that there is nothing, nothing more important than the safety of our students and staff. We're laser focused on our protocols, including, that you know, we've added the additional police officers to each building in addition to our safety monitors. We're looking to enhance our camera technology. We're looking for vulnerable areas that we're putting fencing up around the schools, and we're adding certain alarms on particular doors to help with the safety measures. All actions are to strengthen our safety measures that we have in place now. I want you to also know that in the near future, I'm going to be holding some focus groups so that we can sit down and we can talk about two important issues that I think deserve additional safety measures that I think we should have as a community conversation. And that is, do we want permanently SROs in our elementary schools? And do we want fencing that encompasses our entire school buildings? I also acknowledge that the communication has been brief and generalized. And I wish I could say more. I want to say more. But what I will say now tonight is that I do believe that we are as safe as we can be. B, I believe in our Fama Police Department, and I know that if there was, if we were in imminent danger, if there is a threat that needs, you know, that needs the police attention to put us in lockdown, they're going to do it when we need to do that. At times, we may, like we did in initial two weeks of the police in the schools, and as we took that two days for inside recess, is so that we can continue to collaborate, assess the situation, and make plans. So that may happen on and off. That does not mean that there was a imminent threat. That doesn't mean there was a new threat. It just means that we need a time to assess the situation. So we're taking precautionary measures as we needed. Although we need to still move forward with our business as hand, which is what we're going to be doing tonight, this does not mean that we are not focused on safety. It is still completely crucial for us to do all, make sure all our safety measures are in place, and we are in communication with the police at all times. Okay, so please, as Terry had said, continue to send emails. I really appreciate the parents that are sending their ideas, letting us know that if you want to partner, that's what I really believe is that working together on solution oriented measures will be what strengthens our schools and the district as a whole. So with that said, we're going to begin our presentation. All right, so tonight, we are focused on the Lawrence Grade Configuration. And I want you to know that as we think about.
Could you please put the sign down while we're looking at that? Would we read?
Or at least that one's blocked.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, the one, yeah.
All of them?
Yeah, just that one. I think I appreciate it.
So we're focused on the Lawrence School Grade Configuration tonight, just this portion of the navigating the future together. And as we, you know, planned and prepared this, as well as talking with our staff, I want you to know that when we talk about the Clipper Experience, this is what we're focused on. And so all of our core values, achieving excellence, strengthening our community, fostering mutual respect and honesty, multiple perspectives. The core values that we've talked about is exactly what is focused on when we're looking at the future of public schools. And so here's our beautiful Lawrence School. And as you know, we are, I've already put in a a statement of interest to renovate the school. But tonight, with that said, and we'll find out more by December about that. But right now, tonight, we're just talking about the grade configurations. So my recommendation is that we reopen the Lawrence School with a three-grade configuration, grades five, six, and seven. Move grade eight to the high school the year the construction begins. And right now, that if the earliest that would be, would be twenty thirty, the fall of twenty thirty. And then the second is. And the second is that we would move grades five, six, and seven to the Lawrence Middle School the year the construction is finalized. And then earliest that would be, would be twenty thirty-two. All right, so the key challenges that we're is the declining enrollment. Enrollment has been declining over two decades. The need to consolidate. There is a fiscal responsibility to reduce the number of school buildings. Lawrence School has the capacity to house three grades and reduce the number of transitions to two. The transition students feel more connected and admitted to their schools when they spend longer, a longer time in school. And so with that, we're going to start talking about the enrollment. I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
I'll just give you a couple numbers off the side. So as you're familiar with the NSX, so the so this is, this is the historic enrollment for found public schools. You can see in the top of 2014, 2015 each school year, we had three thousand five hundred forty-seven students in our pre-teen age at twelve. And then if you drop down to the bottom line for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, you had two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six students. So that's just under a twenty percent decline in overall student population for the district. Over that, here's.
And can I just add, this data came from the report from NS that last fall. So this is historic view and the productive view is from.
Then if you go to the next slide, is again, this is NSX's projection for the enrollment. And highlighted in the blue in the fourth column over, that's the school year. So again, today, the twenty-four, twenty-five will be twenty-eight, six, and six from last year. And it will be dropping down to in the twenty thirty-one, thirty-two year, I'm sorry, twenty thirty-two to thirty-three year, which is when Lawrence would be renovated and students would be moving back in. You have twenty-five, one, four in the student population at that time for the district. So to get to focus more into Lawrence in the next slide, so here's, here's a sort of thing you saw. If historically enrollment, again, going back to two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, for the seventh and eighth grade was five hundred seventy-six, the Lawrence School. To give you a sense, today, the next line down, that population is four hundred seventy-four students. So that's just about an eighteen percent decline in enrollment. Now, the option is taking, putting fifth, sixth, and seventh into the building in the twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three year. Again, the year that it would be renovated if we're accepted into the MSBA program in December, the projections would have five hundred ninety-five students. So we're just above where we were today in overall number of students, close to where we were back in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. To give you a sense of the highest population, it's not, the number's not on that set. Lawrence was around eight hundred twenty back in two thousand and one. So it had a significantly higher population in the school back in two thousand.
And that's a higher example of one that's been my tenure, year or two after this, two thousand fifteen, sixteen was over six hundred students of the school. So there's definitely space in that building. Make a renovation project on.
Okay, and to add some additional perspective, on the high school, if you get, if you look at the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year from grades nine to twelve, we had eight hundred and sixty-two students in the building there. Today, this roughly seven hundred and fourteen. Our official numbers, I should mention, are coming out October first. So these are last year's data. And then if you look at the enrollment, the projected enrollment for the high school, in this case, eighth moves in in twenty thirty, if the school committee agrees to the recommendation. So twenty thirty would be the year that the construction starts on the Lawrence School, as opposed to it opening up in twenty thirty-two. So eighth grade would move up to the high school in twenty thirty. And the projections of the high school is, at that point, would be eight hundred thirty-three students. If you, if you take out the eighth grade, out of that eight thirty-three, just to give you another perspective, that number will drop to six hundred and eleven. So without the eighth grade, the six hundred and eleven with the eighth grade will be eight thirty-three.
Yeah, one of the considerations in the part of the discussion of the last year has been, is the remodel completed in two thousand ten. But the high school hasn't built the capacity at about twelve hundred or twelve hundred plus. And so one of the considerations, when you think about eight twelve or six eight, is if you have the high school as a nine, twelve building, you're going to have a twelve hundred student building with six hundred plus students in it. And then think about how that cascades down to what the capacity then looks like at middle and then elementary. So just in the sense of having a really good facility built for a large number of students, the consideration, at least for us, eight twelve, there's many reasons to do it. One of those for our specific community is that we have a high school with that kind of capacity that has the room to be able to do that and do it well. And also, the impact, if you go nine, twelve, having a small number in that larger building while other schools are more towards capacity.
So earlier, Dr. Durham had talked about one of the challenges that we face. And that is the number of transitions that students make as they go from school to school because we know that transitions can be disruptive to student learning. So what we did was we reviewed the grade configurations for the number of transitioned students made across the twenty-four schools in the old colony region, where part of the old colony region. But if you take a look at the the slide there, you'll see the number of transitions K to twelve. So of the twenty-four schools, we just kind of mapped out how many transitions the schools had. So there was one school, Martha's Vineyard, had only one transition for students K to twelve. And then for two transitions, seventeen schools within the old colony region. And then for three transitions, like Fountain has, there were six schools. So the majority of the schools within the old colony district have just the two transitions, schools like Mashpee, DY, Sandwich. Tim was going to talk about that impact.
Yeah, so, and the thing, you know, Mr. Bushy and I go see, you know, how we have to manage that now with two quick transitions that happen in the middle grade years and having students for two short years while moving on to the next grade, then on to the high school. Of the challenges that are involved with that, getting to know any group of students takes time with an entirely new staff. We do, I think, a lot of work. We do it well in the spring each year to make that transition happen. Multiple meetings and notes that are shared, and visits that happen so that students are comfortable. But it is a transition. And when it happens quickly, that's like, I think, we get to know our fifth graders before we know it. It's halfway through sixth grade and we're just seeing them off. No, it was definitely a challenge that many transitions filled into the next school grade.
So we continued with the regional view on the grade configurations. And we noticed that moving three grades at the middle school was most popular, six to eight, and then five to seven was the most frequent. If the districts enroll in grades five to seven in the same school. And then when we looked at the high schools, similarly, eight districts enrolled eight to twelve in their high schools. At some times, you may recognize Barnes, Boma, and Waringham.
So as we reflect on the recommendations that was made at the top of the presentation, we start to look at support and flexibility relative to the two groupings, five through seven and eight through twelve. Key factors that we looked at when making determinations about how to assign grade configuration in the middle school is reducing transitions, as Sandy just mentioned, ensuring that we have developmentally appropriate pedagogy. So focusing on how we instruct our students and making sure that it's matched in their readiness and aligned with community needs and priorities. Licenseur enters into the conversation from the perspective of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Licenseur is set up so that educators can be licensed for grades five through eight in the subject or content area, and then store it at nine through twelve, and then it's shifted into eight through twelve. And then in the past couple of years, they've also introduced middle school specific licenses, one being for humanities, so partnering ELA and social studies, and one being for STEM, they're partnering math and science. Again, focusing in on the middle grades. And with that, one of the things that we continue to look at is that middle schools largely enroll, as Sandy pointed out, three grades. Some have four, but fewer are limited or restricted to the two grades. And part of that is the resource base and some of these pieces that we're talking about, reducing transitions. So focusing in a little bit more specifically, again, keeping it in the context of the recommendation of five through seven, eight through twelve, we put attention on curriculum and pedagogy and instruction. So in responding to the wide variance of middle school grade configurations, we recognize that national and Massachusetts state standards are organized in grade bands. But within that, each grade has its own specific expectations, and each one connects to another so that they're vertically aligned. Reconfiguration of our middle school gives space to reconsider where the starting point is for accelerated math, as an example, but other enrollment opportunities that are available to students. And reconfiguration also allows for stronger tiered intervention with access to more resources. And I think Tim alluded to that point just a second ago when you're talking about a student being with you for two years and you're really getting to know them in the second year. And then they're moving versus having them for three years and being able to continue to more readily personalize the support that we provide for those students.
So we recognize that students transitioning into grade five will need additional support in these areas of both their self-management and their social emotional skills. We recognize both of these areas now. They're targeted for our students who transition into the more spawned school. So we would continue to plan to provide that explicit instruction and executive function skill, as things like organizing and taking responsibility for your actions, managing materials. And then again, for the social emotional skills, again, specific instruction to help students with their inter and interpersonal skills needed to help manage their emotions, build relationships, and make those responsible decisions. It's important that we continue to monitor key indicators for students, like their academic performance, attendance, chronic absenteeism, to make sure that we're identifying any students who may, who may need a higher level of support, the students who could be at risk. There are also some benefits of them, the stage group, that five, six, seven, thinking about opportunities for peer mentors, so younger students can benefit from older students who can model their skills and behaviors, and enhance the leadership opportunities for the older students, and then opportunities for social competence, more collaboration, negotiation with a more diverse range of students, bigger group. So the, also decreasing, you know, having five, six, seven is going to decrease that future need for students, again, transitioning into another school, as we have now the seventh graders who have to do that transition again.
So what we did is we conducted a focus study on the fifth grade configuration models. Our concentration work was on three areas. First of all, the comparison of vomit achievements with the twenty-four districts of old colony regions. We also looked at the benchmarking of vomit performance against ten mass districts with similar characteristics. It's generated by Desi. And finally, we did a review of academic literature, fifth grade models. What we found out is that that there are, in both the first choose characteristic, it's basically, most elementary schools were in elementary settings. It was like fifty-five percent of old colony region had it. And with the generated range, it was fifty percent. So it tended to be more in the elementary range. But research shows that, I'm sorry.
It is fifty-five.
Oh, all right. So fifty-five percent is the, about fifty-five percent of the schools in the old colony region had was in elementary setting. And then the second one, which is the benchmarking, it was fifty-fifty. It was, it was, you know, most of them, it didn't matter. It was half more, something more in middle school, the other one were in.
Oh, the place in a fifth.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I just missed like the.
No, no, no. But either way, no matter which, which area, when we look at the achievement, vomit outperformed these two schools in both districts. And so, and what the research said is this, is that the location is not the primary. They said, if you want success, the real primary thing that you have to concentrate is pedagogy, you know, high quality pedagogy, culture, a culture that's supportive and addresses the social emotional needs and systems of support, and finally, relationships. Looking at teacher educator relationship where every student is felt, is learned, valued, supported. So where they are is secondary to how we put them and how we teach them.
So as we continue to move through the grades, we also want to put some attention to grade eight being included in the high school and the information as we continue to look at that. I previously mentioned that it's an opportunity for accessing accelerated or advanced courses like math. Also, students at Lawrence School beginning their world language, for being able to accelerate their world language faster, improving persistence rates into high school. And part of that is students having access to elective opportunities as well as our career technical education, including exploratory opportunities, so they can try out different pathways before they make a commitment to one or to two in which they're going to study. Also increasing opportunity access to advanced courses, including honors and advanced placement or AP courses, and all of the increased access available to students, as well as our continued commitment to strong tiered one instruction, improves outcomes for students, so increasing equity along the way in excellent.
So similar to the previous slide that I spoke about, if we focus on transition for the eighth grade students going into the high school, there would be similar to the supports that are currently in place for our ninth graders when we think about the academics and social emotional supports they may need as they make that transition. So we would continue to plan for that programming, focused again on that relationship building, which is that common theme. It's also when we think about having that longer grade span at the high school, it gives students a better opportunity to develop longer lasting relationships, not only with their peers, but also with their teachers, and also helps build a stronger community from a the families. You know, we would continue, just as we do with our ninth grade families, as they're currently going into the high school, providing them with that clear, consistent communication about course options and expectations, and then maybe the levels and forth, et cetera. And then with regard to safety, there wasn't any statistical indication of increased safety risk by placing the eighth grade students at the high school. And then there were some additional considerations with regard to the capacity at the high school. And I think Alan was going to speak a little bit more about that. You know, having the space at the high school and how we would align with the other Cape districts, the athletic opportunities. You know, having the the space at the high school and how we would align with the other Cape districts, the athletic opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, I I first visited to meet the staff at the Valley High in in June of twenty twenty-two, and when I came out to visit and meet them. Uh stopped in the hallway two or three times and asked if anyone had talked to me about the eighth grade coming to the high school. To me, that when I was a new principal and I hadn't even started, so just the conversation at the high school among. Among uh community members and all staff about the eighth grade coming to the high school, to me, has been in place for for some time. There are many uh aspects of it, I think one of those that we touch on there is uh students in eighth grade and are often exploring what do they want to do? When they are in high school, what do they want to choose a career? Where do they want to go? Are they interested in the arts? One of the challenges with adolescents and early adolescents is you can tell them all kinds of things, but seeing it and touching it really changes how they how they connect with it. So one of the benefits of eighth graders being on the high school campus is the chance to see our multiple career and experience those opportunities within the school. To be in the athletic programs, to be in our arts and marching bands when they're in eighth grade before they're making decisions about other schools and other school options. So we do think our retention of 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 students to the high school is certainly an asset, but I think beyond that. Uh the connection that students have when they start in ninth grade, uh the transcripting begins. And having the students at the high school in eighth grade as part of that, you're able to do greater tiered intervention and greater tiered support. So you're able to think about their real readiness before they're in those transcripted classes in ninth grade, the supports are around them. Uh so there's, I think there's many assets that are there, and and I'll cover some of those a little in uh discussion about what their teachers say.
So I I did, we did another uh. A study as well, like the fifth grade with the eighth grader, where it should be either in the high school setting or in those school. And we use the same kind of benchmark, we use uh comparison, benchmarking and review. And what we saw is that uh in both configuration, whether they're in the middle school or the high school. Uh prominent students consistently outperform their peer uh districts, whether it's regional in the Old Colony District or whether it's in the Desi um. Uh identifying the districts, and so. We're, so that is, that is the fact, uh but the, again, the. Research overwhelmingly says the same things, that it does not matter where it is, it's a secondary factor. What matters again is pedagogy, how we are teaching, not simply where we're teaching, it's it's, and I believe that the family uh is committed to. Teaching excellence is uh in in creating a supportive culture and educators who are care deeply about the students. So again, it's it's very similar to the fifth grade, but it's it's how we teach.
Okay, let's let's point in uh turn to what it sounded like feedback then from uh the community at large and um. And so as you can see from uh the screen, uh we had for the navigating feature some two hundred and twenty-seven responses. Um overall, the most common topics, uh common responses, you know, the two most significant outcome. Where do not merge P ticket in East Falmouth and then move to redistrict. Uh and then the second was renovate the law in script school. So those were the two most uh common, there was only eighteen percent of those two hundred and twenty-seven responses had actually. Shared some level of preference for break configuration. On law school post-reservation, so it was, there was a small, a very small number, I had two twenty-seven. You know, for example, there was seven that were of grades five to seven, that was twenty-eight for six to eight. Uh and uh two were for grades uh combination of grades five through eight. Um additional, there was twenty-five that added fifth to the elementary schools. Uh and moved eighth to the high school, and that fifteen responses in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got you. So once again.
Sure. So you go five to seven, that's seven uh respondents that were in favor of that move, and and. A responded, by the way, could respond to multiple um uh multiple categories, so it's not exactly cumulative, let's see, go through these numbers. Sixty-eight uh for grades configured is sixty-six through eight to a twenty-eight. The grades five to eight combination for two. Or adding fifth grade to the elementary sort of twenty-five in favor. Uh they moved eighth to the high school. Fifteen were in favor, do not move uh six. So again, there was uh a- about eighteen percent of this population of two hundred and twenty-seven responses. And address the middle school preferences through grade structure.
You know, of note on that. Piece in those surveys was that there was a request in the in that piece of. The majority of one in eight to twelve at the high school, and also one in six to eight in the middle. Right, which is which is part of this work at times, right, is is that the, yeah, ideally you'd have six, eight, and but you can't do both, right? Uh but just making sure as a school committee, you're you're processing in this uh the. The majority and information, you'll see some of the teacher piece about that eight to twelve at the high school. If that decision is made, it leads to the next one.
So last spring, um I did a survey with just um staff uh only. Uh there are two hundred and thirty-three responses. As you can see, seventy-one percent uh were our uh educators. Uh the our unit A, um so. Our teachers, um counselors, um the all the educators that fall into that group, so. In that slide, um so. The question is to, uh what degree do you think the district should be reducing the number of transitions? Uh you can see it was fifty-two percent that agreed or strongly agreed uh that we need to reduce um the transitions.
Laura, can I just pause it? What uh two hundred and thirty-three responses, how out of what, like I said, total number of that? That could, that could have responded, just sort of firm baseline of.
Oh, okay, so it's gonna be the four units, but no, not lots of that.
Yeah.
But it's, it's just under five, something. Or some.
Yeah.
Okay, so um so that was the transitions, um and then we had uh the great configuration, so you can see uh the thirty-seven percent, the highest percent. Uh requested grades five, six, and seven, but a close second um was for uh grades, uh thirty-five percent of the grade six, seven, and eight, so. So what this tells us is really, you you can't go wrong in in the preferences, um whichever whichever way you go. Whether it's five, six, seven, or six, seven, eight. Uh I just wanna uh also say this, the other strong uh compelling reasons um for me to emphasize.
Okay. So as we um continued on, we had the snapshot of data that Paul spoke to from earlier on. Um the staff data that Laura just spoke to from this spring, and then an opportunity this fall to follow back up with teams of teachers. So here, uh we have some information that was shared with us by grade five teachers and their focus group, looking at opportunities. Um identifying the students in grades five through twelve, it's a good age group to keep together, they already travel together, so we would be introducing new age groups. Again, pointing out reduced transitions, which is something that we've heard echo through the presentation. Um there are other places where we already have three or more grades together, so thinking about the elementary and the high school, so three grades together didn't feel like a big change. Um continuity of care, which is part of what we've been talking about, the longer that we have students together in one school, the more we get to know them, the more that we can personalize their response to them. Uh the access to additional opportunities, just as we've spoken, and Alan gave us some great examples about what it could look like for the graders at the high school. Um students having opportunities to access the different activities and uh extracurriculars, athletics that are available at Lawrence. And then our peer mentoring program continues to grow, and it's opportunity um for the students to be met and support each other as well. So beyond those opportunities, I think Tim has some other pieces he wants to share here around the consideration.
Some of the logistical considerations that the staff shared for that configuration, thinking about it, what a space could look like and how um students would function within it. We have to spend some time thinking about how students with passion, plastic glass, I mean, in the elementary grades, you. Be over around the building with your classroom teacher, and so you're transitioning into a space where we continue to do that for a bit, and move on to. Um giving them more opportunity for independence, so you gotta make that transition happen smoothly. Um obviously, another need would be for recess, you've got a new playground, um to have recess outside with kids, you still continue recess in that building. Um how would you do that? The impact on children's police and development, um just thinking where they are in life, they. You know, how they are, when we started in fifth grade, they seem really, they seem smaller to me now than we used to, that age level where they're in kindergarten, they're building, but they there's a really, really, they do a lot of growing, you know, those uh two years that we have them now, and certainly three years. Um the seventh included, so just wanna, you know, make space for all of those, all of their needs, with one building. Um fifth graders, they need their own lunch, and how we, you know, structure our lunch, our lunch schedule for each of the individual grade levels that would be in that building. Um how do you monitor common spaces, you wanna have, you know, obviously have good eyes on. Um the day and making sure students are safe and involved, managed, and to help facilitate social development too, where people about recess is an opportunity to play, for instance. Adults are there too to help, you know, facilitate social development, it's not just completely free time, it's part of the learning experience, so to do that though. Um and then intentionally configuration and grades spans and the standards, so. The topics we cover um how we have grade level meetings and looking at the instructional piece for um a configuration of five through seven would be part of the thing we need to do.
So here we have um a focus group, which is the eighth grade teachers, and what we saw are several important logistical considerations. That uh that need to be identified as eighth graders' transition to the high school. Educators highlighted the need for districts to plan for careful uh carefully in these areas, I uh. I identify a couple of ones, the the one is the transportation, I think first two, uh transportation needs, we need developing routes and schedule to support a transition. Uh some teachers said that we we really need to make sure that the eighth grade structures and teams are put together, so determine how current team structure will be adapted or reconfigured. Uh educator uh licensure or certificate certifications, expand certifications to ensure that appropriate coverage of middle school and high school subjects. And staff cohesion's uh building co- collaboration and alignment among new and existing staff. Uh we're confident that our our staff, our leadership team can address it, uh I think um. Dr. Harris can can give you more on that, but really toward the opportunities that's in that.
So one of the, one of the challenges that many high schools face as the uh enrollment uh. Decline within the school is the capacity to be able to offer. Both uh exploratory or elective opportunities as well as um athletic and other extracurricular opportunities, right? So they end up having to drop a marching band, because you don't have enough students, or having to drop certain electives or other things, because you don't have enough staff to be able to do that for that number spread. One of the things the eighth grade teachers, I think wisely wisely pointed out, was that when you bring eighth grade staff into the high school, you create more flexibility of where and what teachers can teach. And being able to provide more opportunities, if a teacher coming to the high school in eighth grade, as as an eighth grade teacher. Then that increases the amount of staff that are on campus to be able to be on club advisor, be a coach in the afternoon, do those things and provide those elective opportunities that otherwise may not have been there. The considerations of uh. Thinking about eighth grade, and I think as as Tim talked about, everything from how they have lunch and how they move through the school and those considerations, the things that I appreciate very much, the timeline on this. I think many, talking to other colleagues at other high schools, they aren't given. An adequate amount of time to really prepare the school, prepare the staff, and prepare the logistics within the school for that successful transition of what it looks like for eighth graders, how they're there. Those elements that are real strength at Lawrence, the walking field, just some of those elements to make sure that those strengths are held as we look into the, you know, the new opportunities. Uh the other thing, as you consider this, is when you're looking at this. Uh regardless of what configuration happens at the high school, we've been talking for a year plus with our staff. That the future of the high school with career opportunities, dual enrollment, and other things requires a reconsideration of the bell schedule. And a reconsideration of the starting and end of the school day, and what it looks like having the high school open and accessible beyond the school day. So I think important when you think about eight through twelve is, this isn't eight through twelve on the seven twenty-two to two oh three bell schedule. This is eight to twelve with our staff having the ability to rethink the day. Start and end of the day, the supports that are there beyond the day, what do schedule and time and credits look like along the day? It's that opportunity to design the high school of the future, eight through twelve, that I think is where staff get excited. Having the opportunity to do that and what opportunities there, it's tough sometimes to see this and and not see it in the same construct. The timeline gives us the ability to be outside of this time construct, and that's an important element.
So what we've done um is that we we've addressed the um enrollment, we've addressed. Uh the need um to move three grades in and then reduce the number of um transitions. We've talked about the academics, we've talked about. Uh the social emotional piece, we've talked about the achievement. And we've shared uh data from uh the community survey, from the staff survey, and from two focus groups. Specifically around fifth grade and eighth grade, you know, teachers that um work with this grade level and. Uh share, we're gonna move to now just um to hear a little bit more from our principals. Um uh first, Principal Adams, and then Principal Bushy, and then Principal Paris. Around um our recommendation.
Um sorry, uh just from a personal parent perspective, uh my oldest son is in eighth grade currently in a neighboring district. And the school configuration there is grade seven through twelve in the high school setting. Obviously, go from the sixth grade, that's team top very much like Morris Pond is, we got two teachers, maybe a third doing some elective work for some enrichment. And primarily two teachers up to an individual schedule like you have at Lawrence here, but inside of a high school building. Um. And actually, you know, initial trepidation as a parent to now really seeing a lot of the benefits as an eighth grader that has had, um academically. Being able to access advanced placed courses, like taking algebra as a freshman. But taught by a teacher who's part of the greater math department and had previous experience teaching upper grades. And teaching advanced mathematics in the high school setting, so you bring that skill set to the eighth graders immediately within the same building, which has been really exciting. Um. Among others, I think that Alan, that Dr. Harris has mentioned too, you know, language opportunities. Um seeing what you can get as a certification as a high school student with high achievement in the world language, that you're part of that student department, um is real. I think from a social emotional standpoint, something that stood out for me is the opportunities for student mentors with our older high school students for eighth graders. Um and seeing that firsthand, when you have extracurricular activities and. The varsity players taking one of their wing and almost functionally like the older siblings at a lot, but I guess he's getting to hear about. What it's like to apply for college and think about career readiness. From a lot of different kids, so sometimes if you hear from your own siblings, it's like, oh, that's my brother's perspective, right? It's different, you hear it from others, and you get that knowledge, so that's been a real benefit, and it's been a smooth transition, honestly. Um as an educator, um looking at the middle school configurations being proposed. And I know this has come up in a couple of slides, I really want to emphasize the continuity of services and benefit that would bring. Uh when we look at diagnostic results we get for our students in the fall, winter, spring, and the plan that goes around that to provide supports across the spectrum of ability. Um continuing that work year to year. Is just easier when you have them all in the same building again, um as I guess earlier, I think we do. A lot of work in the spring, we get our transition ready to go from sixth to seventh, and I know for eighth up to the ninth grade. When you just get more time, you can pick up those, you can pick up that story again in the fall. With the same staff working with those students again for one more year, I think it's just gonna provide tremendous benefit. And the same for the social emotional supports we can provide, our counselors get to know students. Um very well, get to know their families, and having that third year in a configuration that's being proposed. I think it only helps those supports be even that much more effective, so I'm really excited for the opportunity that it provides.
We're not sure what you mean to say there. It's bad, thank you. Uh, no, just to, just to piggyback on that, the transition piece, I, you know, I echo uh all that uh. Tim was just saying, the transition piece has been brought up, because transition is getting tricky for parents and guardians as well. So uh we do uh work very hard with our incoming uh seventh grade students uh to, you know, put the young members at ease about that transition process, so, you know, while this transition. So you know, while this transition uh learned a different drop off and pickup patterns, uh stay day times, that kind of thing can. Uh alleviate stress for for family members. Um professionally, I will say in a previous role, uh I I worked in a high school where eighth grade students were. Uh part of that school building and uh I I I don't always like to compare us to Barnstable, but. Uh that was the former district I was in and uh you know, say what you want, it was it was working there at Barnstable. Uh but I will say uh more confidently uh that as a parent in this district with a current eighth grade student. And uh and uh one at the high school and two that have left the high school, like. The eighth graders can soar at that building, not just because of learning opportunities that you've heard about, but also because the culture of care is prevalent in that space. Uh just uh being able to know that kids are are safe in that school building. Uh one more piece I would, I would like to add is that uh the staff at at the administrative and uh. Administrative leadership staff at Lawrence and the department heads, the curriculum council have worked really hard to hire. Uh staff members that uh are not just qualified, but that are are skilled. Uh compassionate and flexible and will be able to step up to the task uh whichever. Uh whichever uh building they move up or down, and I and I believe that that's the case at Morse Pond, I see grades five and six as well.
One of my, one of my interests, Dr. Shaw would would say to me, remember Alan, that every solution creates a new set of challenges. And the, and the best you can do is be conscious about those challenges when you walk into it, right? And so I, we would be foolish to say that when we move eight into twelve, there are challenges associated with that that we have to consider. And Officer Hurst certainly raised some of those and community members have raised some of those things that. That certainly are there and important that we think about, obviously the needs of fourteen and fifteen year olds are different than the needs of seventeen, eight year, eighteen year olds. And I think one of the things, the reason I feel so lucky to be in public schools is. Other places I've worked and where I have colleagues work, this consideration is being made to be implemented in a year or two. This is being made with consideration to be able to do it well. And I think the thing that's important for me that that you that you know and understand is, we recognize that in order to do this well. Our absolute strength are our people and our programmers, it is our staff and our faculty. And when they have the opportunity to deeply consider this and think about how we do it well. Staff are already excited about thinking about the ninth grade teams they used to be able to have, that because we have fewer staff, we weren't able to maintain. And how you could think about an eight and nine combination and be able to keep the teaming piece that's there at Lawrence and how it happens. But more importantly, to be able to think about how they do this well and be able to think about what are the challenges and then plan accordingly. That includes thinking about the building, thinking about the time structures and things that it is that I. That I mentioned, I think with with that time, being able to think through the logistics, the the scheduling and those pieces, there is. No question in my mind that in my time in education, more than ever, there are students in eighth grade. And ninth grade who are wanting to accelerate very fast and that opportunity should be there for them. This provides that in a very different and exciting way. We also know that when you allow students to excel, there are students who have struggled that you can worry and get lost in the mix. That's where I think our staff and faculty have an absolute strength, given the time, we'll be able to meet their needs in ways that other. Districts and schools, schools that have done this have struggled, because we do have a depth of support staff that given the time and plan that would would be able to do it really well. Uh I think, you know, and I being part of the building needs committee, I certainly, you know. Historically, the different traditional comp, traditional structures have their benefits. But none of them are found with public schools in twenty twenty-five. Thinking about our future and what for our kids and uh with our people and what they can do. I said many times, never worked with a staff that's more qualified and more caring about kids, I have total confidence if they're given the timeframe to do it. And the fiscal and staffing supports to be able to do it and an open slate to do it well. We will welcome the class of twenty thirty-five with open arms and they'll have great success, um I'm very confident. As part of the building needs task force, uh we, the recommendation that was made and appreciated, I appreciate that from the on that committee, the really heartfelt discussion that happened there. Considering all all of that, but with that, the Billy Task Force recommended recommends a more great configuration as five through seven and eighth grade goes to high school.
And so with all of that said, we're gonna repeat what our um recommendation is. Is that we reopen the Lawrence School with the three grade configuration, grades five, six and seven. We move eighth grade to the fountain high school, the year construction begins, that gives them. Three years to plan and one year for communication, um so four years out. Um we move grade five, six and seven to the Lawrence Middle School, the year construction is fin- finalized, which there always would be twenty thirty-two. Which gives a lot of years to plan thoughtfully um. Uh on how we want the Lawrence Middle School to open and be supportive of grades five, six and seven. And so in that, we thank you and um discussion among school members.
Okay, so rather than raise the hands, we'll just go around the room, it's quicker and, okay, so Mike, you're the first one.
Thank you kindly, Terry. Um I got a bunch of questions, my first one is that, looking at slide five. Uh which is the enrollment historic view, you can see roughly a twenty percent drop. From eighth grade to ninth grade. And that seems to be the biggest drop, if you kind of go down diagonally, you can see a couple of people here, a couple of people there. Eighth to ninth, it's go from, you know, two seventy-five to two twenty-three, three oh six to two fifty-two, I'm just following the next grade down. On a latter slide, Dr. Tellier said that. Uh there would be retention of enrollment at FHS.
Mike, could you stop?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, would it, or who's ever running that slide, could we see the slide to which Mike was referring?
Would be slide five, it's the first chart of enrollment, which is actual numbers. And then the the trend goes on to the, you know, estimated numbers.
Um. Start view.
All right, here, so if you look at the the top line, which is uh, you know, grade eight. It says two hundred and seventy-five, and then if you go down one to the right one, which is next year's grade nine, it's two twenty-three. And then the same, you know, grade eight, twenty-ten says two ninety, you follow it down to the right, it's two forty. Off the top of my head, looking, it's roughly a twenty percent drop. People going from eighth grade to high school. Now later on, it says that doing this would retain enrollment at FHS. Is there any data behind that or is that just a guess? Because my guess would be people would leave after seventh grade. Who are going to a a private high school, a Catholic high school, et cetera. You might have some people that are going to the Volk or Serge's same after year. But I would guess that most people, if they're leaving for high school, they're leaving, so how do we retain students with this new grade, this proposed graduation?
I mean, I, I, one, it it would be a mistake to think that we're saying. We will capture all retention, we're not, we're, what we are saying is, we believe. There are fewer students.
Yeah.
Particularly related to the career tech. That would choose the career tech field. And here's why, currently, students who are in seventh grade or eighth grade at Lawrence. Don't have the opportunity to really live, experience and see the actual classes and experience our students have. And with that, they're being sold on the CTE school from the time they're in fifth, sixth grade. Our belief is that having the opportunity to be at the high school, more of those students would see that. And who are currently saying they prefer to go to a CTE, right? Would stay at the high school, but in no way are we saying that it immediately eliminates that, the reality is. There are five competing high schools competing for students, we think this gives us a greater chance to compete.
I guess my question is, is there any data or research that backs that up other than anecdotes? Because. I mean, we have found the academy in town, which. What's, I I don't understand how we can say that we can retain enrollment at FHS when in reality, we could hemorrhage more students. From that seven to eighth grade shift, but if I keep on going here, the next one I wanted to talk about was, I'll actually have a good quick one for you. Henry uh and Sandy, actually, you talk about. You know, twenty uh, the regional view on transitions and all these schools, like twenty-four schools. And then you had said like there was ten that were similar or whatnot.
Yeah.
What are those schools? Because, I mean. Yeah, can we get a list of those?
Yeah, the Barnes Bowl or in regional.
Florence, Dartmouth, DY, Dayton, Holbus, Fairhaven, Fair, Fall River.
Okay. And then my next question for Paul is. All right, keep on throwing here, do 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 five, survey data, staff and family community. It says the two twenty-seven responses. And I, you had said numbers, I wish that the numbers had been here, but you had said that it was like a three to one who wanted. Six, seven, eight, I believe it was twenty-five, which would have been. Half of the respondents, because two twenty-seven, eighteen percent, roughly forty-five, fifteen people. I think you had said twenty-five and twenty-eight wanted the six, seven, eight, and only seven wanted the five, six, seven. I will say, I I, I have my ideas, I've heard people's emails and online. But I don't think any of us can vote on anything without having the data and the research. There's a lot of buzzwords in this, which is great. And and then the whole idea about the transition, which was covered a lot, it wouldn't make a difference, the transition number based on the grade configuration. I think that without data, without understanding what we're doing and considering that you're saying twenty thirty roughly, I think it was twenty thirty. I I don't see, I personally think we should come back with actual data and research, because a lot of this stuff here and. I mean, this wouldn't. The achievement of grade five students, review academic literature on grade five models. And the same thing with grade eight, but nowhere does it say any data or research on which is better and why. And I will close with this, that I've talked a lot. I had a friend, mine, Caitlin. And she did look this down out of town, and she had heard about this, and she had told me. That if she was in eighth grade with a bunch of high school football players, she would have been pregnant by March three. And I know that's a big concern with the community, and I just wanted to address that, and again. Can we get a domestic uh abuse counselor and SRO in here? Because we really have, th- there's not enough here for us to make a. Data research driven vote tonight, in my opinion, and that's all, so Terry.
Thank you for um the recommendation, besides what we asked for in August at our last special meeting. Um to follow up, I guess first on Mike's question, has somebody, I think, I think we examined with a slide. Where it said there's no statistical indication of increased safety risk, there wasn't much said about that, can you expand on that? That's my first question.
Well, I guess, I guess to go to answer like what what uh Mike was saying, you know, looking for research. Um there there isn't any statistical, but when you, when you're searching for, there isn't any specifically journal articles and things that are not just news. You know, US news or, you know, things that are um, looking for true, right? Through data, through research, or stated.
It it's limited in terms of anything that's current or relevant within the past ten to fifteen years. And what's available for most of the research just points to, when you're determining what grades to complete here. Building strong relationships, having resources and materials that are developmentally appropriate. And building a strong school culture, so more current research says, grade configurations vary community, community. But as long as you're, you're personalizing that experience for students, it leads to stronger outcomes for students.
Okay. Can I ask, I ask the follow up question, I don't jump on my line, but that being said, if there's no data research either way saying this is better, this is better. We should be looking at the the two hundred and twenty-seven people and the emails that we're getting, and they all kind of point one direction. So I think that would be more important is to listen to the community. And the two hundred and twenty-seven, which seems to be overwhelmingly six, seven, eight, that's what I see, but again, this is all anecdotal. Which is why I was looking, I mean, I'd like to have more stuff down in the community, because if that's the big driver is how the community reacts, we should. Get more information than two hundred and twenty-seven people, I think it's like. I'm sorry.
So I I agree, I think we need, last year's survey is irrelevant in my mind, because the oxygen was sucked out of it by the T ticket merger compensation. People weren't focused on grade configuration at that time, uh we need a new survey, but it's focused only on this one topic. I think we also need um communities, if not, I'm not that fond of community forums, because it's just an opportunity to talk, I would prefer we had. An event similar to the one that we did for the um. The equity audit, where people sat down in a room, round tables, there was somebody who presented data who was a third party, preferably like we did with the equity audit. Present the data and then let people talk in small groups that are moderated and you get feedback in that way, and that way it's um actionable feedback. And you're gathering it from people who really care and wanna have the conversation, I've had a lot of conversations in the last week especially. People do seem to be focused on the grade configuration now, and of those people, many, I would say most of them. And previously I've heard a mixed bag, but in the last week it has been only people. Who really feel strongly that fifth graders are children, they're little children. Tim said it very well, they are not able to negotiate a hallway on their own, they need extra safety, security, you know, with the older kids. They would need a playground built for them because they need recess, I would argue, even up to eighth grade, you need recess. I think that's ridiculous, we don't have recess for eighth graders. But that's being aside, Tim said very clearly that these are little kids. And if we push them to be middle schoolers before they are old enough, you increase the likelihood of anxiety. And stress and poorer academic outcomes, in my opinion, and that is an opinion that's shared by everybody I spoke to in the last week and I reached out to people across. Many um age groups and backgrounds. Um so when we look at what was just presented. The, the argument for eighth grade moving up to the high school, I can see it. I can see it especially for kids who are excelling already, um they're gonna fly, like Tom, like Alan said. Um I, I do worry about the kids who are not ready for that, I think maybe the the. The idea that you can put them into more contact with those um career paths, that's something you can bump back. Bring the contact with the career path into the middle school, give the K through fourth and fifth graders an opportunity to engage with real meaningful work. That has more meaning than schoolwork, because I think by fifth grade, kids are generally kind of losing interest. And if you are pushing them into a more academic environment without offering them these more interesting opportunities, so you can't get them until they're in eighth grade or high school. You're, you know, you're missing out on that with the little kids, because they are fully able to do that, so anyway, those are my opinions. Dropping fifth grade down requires fewer changes to the certification of teachers, requires no new playgrounds to be built, there's no need for new lunch schedules, the ages can be mixed on the buses without any concerns at all. Um fifth graders can mentor first graders just as well as seventh graders can mentor a fifth, and in my experience, probably better, seventh graders are not that. Thoughtful. Sorry, if I was a seventh grader, I want you to remember it. Um so that's like, those are equally split, you can have fifth graders mentoring first graders, you don't have to, it's not one or the other, they're both equal. Language is an advanced math can, and I think really should be offered in K through five, so you don't lose those kids who are getting disinterested in math by fifth grade. Why don't we have a language program in the elementary schools? We're missing out on that, keep these kids in the district, offer them things that they can't get into high school. I really mean that, and then you can argue that there would be fewer transitions by doing K through five, just the same as there would be five to seven, it's the exact same. There's no merit one to the other, you're getting fewer transitions either way. Um continuity of care and tiered sports are just as possible in K through five as they would be doing the five through seven. You're still gonna have those kids for a longer time, you're gonna get to know them better. These are not arguments in favor, they're not convincing arguments in my mind to sway me to say that middle school should be five to seven, they're equal, they're the same. Um and then just to finish up on my first round of thoughts here, um. We really do need a new survey, last group's data is completely irrelevant and I can't proceed without um further. Opportunities for input, I recognize that the staff survey was last spring, that is very recent. But it might be worth doing a follow-up staff survey, you can't operate on information when people weren't focused on it, that's my, that's my main weapon.
Yeah, so. You know, that that's kind of just a lot of information for me to digest, I think me personally, anytime I kind of. Sit with it. Um I definitely think some more. Kind of meat behind the data or what was presented. Um would be helpful uh for me to to kind of. Get a good picture um of this. And I think also in terms of just. Presenting this so that the community can also kind of see this information, you know. I mean, one thing I expect is when people try to make an argument, that they have, they presented with kind of their sources and their. You know, where they got their data from, so you know, I kind of expect the same, same thing. So I think, you know, it's kind of a lot of. Kind of general information, but you know, kind of to see the the real data behind it. Um would be very helpful for me. You know, I'm not. I I feel like for me, you know, I understand the recommendation for for moving eighth grade into the high school. I feel like equally important for me would be. And I'm not sure, you know, how helpful this would be, I'm I'm kind of just thinking here on the spot, but. You know, why the fifth grade moving down would not work out as well, you know, I can definitely. You know, I hear all the suggestions, all the, you know, support behind it, and and it sounds, you know, it sounds great to me, it sounds. You know, with with the vision. And kind of creating a high school of the future, um you know, is is, you know, very appealing, and I think. You know, for me, just kind of. I guess seeing more of kind of the, you know, not that, not that we can do that within this timeframe, but seeing maybe a little more. Information and and the details of, you know, what that high school of the future would look like, um seeing, but also seeing. And I feel like I'm kind of scattered here, that's kind of where my brain is right now. You know, kind of s- seeing some of the reasoning for. For not. Not moving fifth grade. Into the. Elementary school and keeping eighth grade. Uh you know, I I definitely agree with, I think, um what Katrina was saying with a new survey, kind of, I think. You know, there there was a lot going on last year, and I think to kind of get a fresher perspective where people might be. Maybe a little more focused, hopefully, you know, I know safety is a big issue right now for people, so. You know, hopefully, we can still get um. Some focus on on this topic. I would kind of be in support of that. But, yeah, I think for now, that's that's kind of all I have.
First of all, I'd like to add, as I was a member of Building Needs Task Force, as well as Melissa representing the school committee. I'd like to thank the members that were on that task force, which met for a good six, seven months. And had intense discussions regarding all of these um proposals. Community members were Roberta Tinucci, Nancy Taylor, who actually um represented the town as well. But a good portion of the members were um staff members. Kelly Mish, Stacy Bedrow, Alan Harris, Melissa Hamilton. Uh Ryan Hurd, uh representing the police department. And as well as Mallory Lavelle. Lavelle, who is um an educator, as I understand it. Christina Woods, who is a teacher at Lawrence School, and Mary Kate Trutu, um another staff member. Uh I appreciated. Their input and the intense discussions that went along with meeting as a group. Um in talking about the eighth grade proposal. Uh discussions revolved around the size of FHS, and as pointed out tonight. By Dr. Harris, that it lends itself to age twelve. When I look at the surrounding communities, we are at a deficit in a lot of ways in comparison to the surrounding communities. Athletics and the academic opportunities for kids. Um as they approach high school age. Uh they have the opportunity again to take more advanced classes. I am convinced as well that our staff would work. Towards a. Transition that would be beneficial to our students. And. Beyond all that. We have an obligation to this town, you guys, too, we have a building. That is underutilized, and if we can come up with a solution, and that we, in that regard, they will support us tenfold, in my opinion. In financial ways, in the ways that. The needs of our kids. The additional needs that they need now. Um whether it be social, emotional. Security, etcetera. Um so those are my thoughts.
Um well. I'm a, I'm a teacher, and I have worked at schools that were both overcrowded. And under enrolled, and neither is ideal. If you have an under-enrolled high school. Um you know, extracurriculars are. As important component to education as academics. And if we think about the consequences, and I see it every day. Um camp field athletic tapes. You don't have enough kids for clubs. There, you don't have a marching band. Not enough kids for a theater program. And also, there's the feeling of walking the halls of a ghost town. When you have a building that can fit twelve hundred kids, and you have six hundred kids in there. That's, you know, that that's. Th- there's a, there's an atmosphere that lends itself to being in that building that is not positive. An advantage for kids being in eighth grade, I would even argue seven to twelve, but the table is set for eighth grade. Is that you know those kids from eight to twelve, and. My colleague. Expressed uh support for the. Opportunities for high achievers, but I would say that the kids who need the most support benefit, because. Teachers know those those students through their careers at at the high school. In addition, and my last comment is, I've also worked at an elementary school, and I can tell you that there's a big difference between. First graders and third graders now. Fifth graders are not the fifth graders of the past, this is, you know, yet, of course, they're still children. Twelve graders are still children, but. There, it's, fifth graders are different now, and I would argue that there's a a larger chasm between a first grader and a fifth grader. Than there is between a fifth grader and a seventh grader, so um. So those are some of my preliminary thoughts based upon. My uh experience, however, I do want to support. Um what Mike said about his concerns about retention, I think this is. A workable plan. But I would like to see. A plan that addresses. Um retention for the high school, because without that. You know, we can, we can do this, but if we don't also have some other. Enticements for kids to stay. Knowing the birth rate, you know, knowing we we have to be realistic. But uh we need, we need those two to go in tandem.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
Thanks. So I'm going to um. But I also thank being on the Building Needs Task Force, I like uh Mrs. Avesta was on there to be asked and. Was proud to do the strong work that we did, and I am grateful for everybody that was on that. And a lot of us uh sat there not only as school committee. Or uh staff, or interesting with the district, but a lot of us were also parents as well. And even though um when all of this happens, my children will have been graduated. This still very much means a whole lot to me for a variety of reasons. So, I am definitely in support of having less transitions, I've been saying this since I sat at this table many years ago, that. You know, I think that Mr. Bushy said it well when, or maybe Tim, Mr. Adams, and Mr. Bushy said it together, but. You know, you just kind of start to get to know kids at the fifth. And sixth grade level, and then it's on to seventh grade, and it's on to the high school, whereas the elementary school, it was a big hug, and. Oftentimes, you know, speaking as a mother right now, my children were at their elementary school. For six and a half years, so I, you know, when you're in the elementary school, and everybody knows you, and it's a hug, and it's the same. Things, and everybody, you know, oftentimes, this is where families. Are sending their children for the first time, not with another family member, or a grandparent, or a, you know, somebody that they've known and trusted, so. You know, that, that's not lost on us either. I like the fact that we're having less transitions, um I think it's really important. At such a challenging age group, where i- it's important for us to get to know them, and to speak. To my colleague who just mentioned, you know, arguing with seven to twelve, because you really get to know the. Students, I think that that's really important, because this is a really challenging time. School start times at uh Found High School, conversation started many years ago, I was also happy to be on that subcommittee. Or task force, I think we held it, this has been a fluid conversation, and I love that it's organically changing. With this navigating the future, it was never meant to be stale or stagnant, it was never meant to. Oh, we checked that box, that would've been on, that was never part of the conversation, it was, you know, it will come up again, and organically with this, it has come up again. As have other conversations that will organically. Come uh to the table, as Doc uh Harris. Suggested with uh. Having new, what was it, help me, the new challenges, you solve one problem. So, but organically, you you get. Different things that come to the table that, you know, maybe are important right this minute, but you just kind of have to wait your turn, and. It will happen. Public schools throughout the country are attempting to retain enrollment by a variety of things, we are not new to this, in fact, if anything, we are a little late to this conversation. I'm grateful that we are having this extraordinarily difficult conversation, I recognize that it is extraordinarily emotional. Uh and I, I'm grateful for everybody that continues to show up and send us emails. Enrollment and birth rate is down throughout. You could even argue. Not just this country, but other countries, so how are we keeping our, you know. Students in our buildings, we are doing things like our pathways programs. As well as, you know, having step up night for band, and uh some eighth grade athletics. Being able to join the high school teams. We're not new to this. So I would like, I would argue to continue to foster that, you know, when. I'm old, but when I was at Common High School, the band was really booming, and it was really exciting. And now, if I, if I look, and I'm grateful for the kids that are there, but when I think about what we could be so much more, that's. One example of something that I think is extraordinarily important, and I think that, um like how we've also mentioned. Having other opportunities, not just with athletics and band, but also in classes. We have to also be financially responsible, you know, we're tasked, when we sit at this table, by the town who elected us to make important decisions, and. You know, heavy is the head that wears the crown, some of those decisions are really challenging and really. Challenging, and this is one of them, I I don't know how else to say it, you know, this has not been a comfortable conversation, but that's sometimes what you have to do when you. Sit in these roles, so. I am grateful for the people that I work with, and I am grateful for the strong work that we have done. In closing, um. We worked really hard on the Building Needs Task Force, and I would argue that we did our, did our due diligence for that. I wouldn't be opposed to having a survey that uh is not influenced, I don't, I would think, I think it. She suggested that the oxygen being sucked out of it last fall is an accurate description. I would be A okay if that, if we did have another survey, perhaps we could encourage uh more than two hundred and twenty. Of the people to respond to that. So again, uh thank you for this conversation, thank you for this data, thank you for continuing to. Move along with our work that we're doing.
Thank you, Liz.
Okay, I have a couple questions, um so I mean, I think it was your side, has correct, I have a pedagogy, grade to five, seven, eight to twelve. And it just says. Um that the national and state standards are organized, they have three categories, does that just mean like six and eight, you know, like some group there, yeah. They're just like that, okay, I just don't want to make sure there was not some term that I didn't know about. Um okay, um then on advantages of eighth grade in high school, there was mention of how, I think. Uh Dr. Harris, I think he said that transcript thing begins. So I'm wondering if. Because right now, if kids are in eighth grade and they're taking. Algebra, is it algebra, like the, okay. They are, they're eligible to take those advanced classes once they get to ninth grade, because one they took in eighth grade doesn't count. Right, it doesn't count on their. Trans shows of their transcript, but it doesn't, it doesn't, the four years of math at high school, it's something to take. So this is sort of what I'm wondering, well, if you have eighth grade in the high school, does that change, or do the same rules, or how, how does that work?
So what. What it gives you is the. The importance of the time to do this, it gives you the opportunity for those considerations, right, about that, that. Whatever we're gonna do in terms of scrap, transcripting, graduation requirements, those pieces. Guided by Desi, approved by the school committee, so it would give us the opportunity for those consideration, typically acceleration. You're not, a student doesn't accelerate in order, they're gonna accelerate in the algebra with the idea they're gonna take more math, not less math. Right, but with that, it gives us the opportunity to think about what can happen with that in eight to nine. I was mentioning it in terms of. The clock does start, what is different for a student between eighth grade and ninth grade. What grade you get in ninth grade goes on a transcript, that wherever you would apply to go to college or whatever else is going to be there, not in eight. Right, if you have eight and nine together, you're able to think about and support students as they move from eighth to ninth, and they're. Wherever their academics may be, some accelerating, as noted, some may be kind of gap. And you may be able to provide some supports there, so they enter ninth grade transcripting more readily.
So some of it is yet to be determined. It's not in sense.
It gives you the opportunity to be able to plan that out, is what I'm saying.
And I think that's gonna be a similar answer to my next question, which is that if you have. If you have a kid, I'm sorry if I'm like waiting on these, but I'm trying to like. If you have a kid who takes algebra in eighth grade, and then, you know, it was progressing, they will have the opportunities to be. I'm assuming that they would have opportunities to take. Classes with people who are older than them, because they would be, okay, and so those are pieces that would also have to get worked out, right, they're not, oh, sorry. I I just want to make sure that.
Think about it as a spectrum.
Can I ask a question only, I think, yeah, yeah, just go start it, intro. When you, speaking of colleges, do the colleges that are looking at students that think eighth grade is at the high school, do they look at the eighth grade transcript? Or is it still traditionally nationwide, or e- I guess, was even internationally wide, do they look at um nine to twelve, or nine? Irregardless of. If there's a. Thanks, sorry, okay, thank you, sorry.
That's, I think, actually where I was trying to get at, that, that piece, okay, um and then. Um I'm guessing this is gonna be a similar answer, that with planning, we would figure out. If there would be like an eight, nine structure that is different than the rest of the high school, or if. The eighth grade alone would be structured, and so like modified teen situation, like those are the pieces that. Would be figured out. With the time and advanced planning.
So other, other places I've been, and these types of things that have been considered, that that I found were helpful, as as the decision was made. The the school committee said. And these are the things that need to be addressed for this to be successful, I mean, everything, race here is really important, the positives and the challenges, right? So saying if we do this, a concern is, how do you make sure eighth graders are. Safe in how they are in with high school, how do you like, and how do we think about transcripting, right, and I think that was, I tried to notice the power of this is. School committee says this is the configuration. Gives the charge superintendent and us as principals, answer these for us. And and there's checks along the way that we're reporting in, that give you some assurance of those concerns you have, right? That we're, our staff and us are working on them, right, all these are great questions. But they would be, it isn't approved, is it, just automatically, it's approved, and here's what we need you to make sure you're addressing when you build stuff.
Uh okay, so with that in mind, I think um I just want to piggyback on a couple of things that other people said, uh. I'm a hundred percent with Katrina about the recess thing. Um, I, I think she had it for, that I made as well, if that's, um, in, you know, a hospital too. Um, I really appreciate that, the comment from Linda about um, under enrolled and, and over enrolled uh, buildings. I haven't really uh, you just articulated in a way that made it a little bit, they're trying what it should feel like in a, in an under enrolled building that I hadn't really thought about before. Uh, for me and I think along Chris's comment, um, I appreciate the summary of a lot of the background research, but I am, you know, like, I, I do wanna be in the weeds and so I would love um, to, to see the, some of the literature that you guys found, um, it's, I'm sure the summary that you gave is spot on. I don't doubt that, but I, I just like some of the additional background information. I think it's helpful. Um, so I would love that. Um, and then I think, um, you know, one of the, I, I am absolutely confident that that it is going to work whatever we as a committee decide. Uh, I, I really believe that not only are our staff like incredibly skilled at what we do, but also we are not being forced to make a decision and make all kinds of change with no notice. I think it's really important when, to, to acknowledge how long we have to get this planned out and done well. Um, the other thing I think that is, I don't know if it's confusing to me, but I, I'm thinking about it just, I think differently than than others. And so I'm just gonna mention it that the conversation seems to be about fifth graders being elementary, but right now fifth graders are already with sixth graders. And so it's really about the addition of seventh grade to that equation. Um, and I, I think it's, uh, in my brain, it's just framed differently, thinking about it as adding seven rather than saying our fifth graders are elementary students. Because right now, yes, technically most of them is elementary, but they've already made a transition by then. And they're already moving to a time where they do have a little bit of additional transition in the day. Yes, the teacher might be with them, but it is diff, it's different than the setting of a second grade uh, classroomness. Uh, so I just, I think that's what's mentioning, um. No, I don't think so. Thank you, Fielding Needs, for the recommendation and Laura, thank you for your recommendation and to the team for all of uh, the consol. I think I had mentioned, um, you know, previously that I really just wanted all of the material consolidated into one place. Um, so that we can think about it deeply and I feel like that's what we got. So I appreciate it.
Margaret.
Thank you. Um, I, I have done research because it's been a long time since I was in the old meeting with the teacher. But I thought it was important to probably, uh, and if people, people wanted the references I can give you. I also wanna say that actually I just spent some time with family and I had uh, family members who are in elementary school and I have several family members who are teachers in high school and I live in school. Um, I also wanna say that I think teachers and administrators, whatever we assign, will make it work. And that is not my concern. My concern is what is best for our students and that's how we focus. I am delighted with the notion of less transitions. And what you just said was interesting because I had never thought of that. And I'm gonna say a lot of reasons why fifth graders should go back to elementary school, but in some ways we already have to, there are few students. You know, the fifth graders are already there. So, um, there is no definitive answer about what, where fifth graders should be. It's gonna depend on various factors and individual student needs. It depends on the school's specific approach, the student's maturity level, and the support systems available. And I'm gonna give you the arguments for fifth, for fifth grade remaining in elementary school because that's the research I have done, not to, you know, and I have some concerns about fifth graders, you know, being, but I'll mention that later. Uh, the transition from fifth grade is a new challenge and it's caused for increased academic demands, social adjustments. Um, a familiar environment with no teachers reduces anxiety and promotes sense of belonging. Opportunity for leadership roles, mentor younger students, can boost their confidence and self-esteem. And some research suggests higher achievement in reading and math. Studies show there are fewer behavior problems when the fifth graders go over to sixth grade. Human transitions are certainly better academically, socially, and emotionally, they're all concerned. It often prepares students for transition, allows students to remain in a less pressured setting for a longer it reduces negative social influences that are sometimes associated with mental sports. Not ours or some of theirs. Um, but the research is conclusive. Um, the best choice depends on an individual student's needs and what, um, and what are the priorities that people have. Now, the arguments from middle school. It provides increased independence and responsibility as they navigate more complex schedules with multiple teachers. Wide range of subjects and extracurricular activities, it allows students to explore their interests and talents. There's exposure to active activities which is beneficial for providing role models and preparing them for high school. And they may have graded games in reading scores instead of the next grade. The other thing I'd wanna say, and I'm gonna mention this is because we're, we're talking a lot and I think it's really important that we, we sort of differentiate between middle schools and junior high schools. The, we are talking about a middle school. And middle school focuses on holistic approaches, both academically and socially emotional development. It incorporates interdisciplinary teaching and its, um, subjects are integrated. Classrooms by grade, uh, with teachers, teachers rotated. Um, depends if, if, it, it is easy for the transitions between elementary school and high school and then the middle school. It supports programs for social and emotional growth. A junior high school is really for academic preparation, which is not what we're talking about yet from everything I've heard. Classes are specialized, typically seven through nine, and less focused on social, emotional development. And the emphasis is on preparing the academic grade. Um, I, I spend a lot of time in, in the schools and I've gone to a lot of events. And I can tell you that there are certainly some fifth graders, and this is my concern, and I've mentioned it to Doc before. You know, are they, um, ready in terms of socially? Um, transition to maturation is very difficult, socially, emotionally, academically. And that's my concern. And I know that there are a lot of fifth graders that I've seen that are certainly prepared to go into, you know, middle school. And so I have two, a few questions. What my questions would be for those that are ready grade, but I'd like to have more specifics and prejudice here, well and wax. What are the supports for fifth graders that really sort of aren't there? That are, that are not in terms of maturation, ready to move in that direction. And it's the same thing for eighth graders, that there are many eighth graders that I agree, you know, are ready to go to, you know, and can excel when they're into high school. But what I wanna know more specifically, what are the supports that you should provide for them? Actually, really, for the students, uh, um, and, um, the other question I had when I first saw off in this room is how are fifth graders different now? You know, when we're told fifth grades are different, we're simply talking about the difference. And I really, that's a, is a question because I don't know, as I said, I've seen some fifth graders, they're ready to fly, another fifth graders, they're sort of, they look like kids. And so I wanna know, when I hear people say, uh, how are fifth graders different now? And those are my questions. And I hope what I've said, and the, the third life who said that, if anybody wants to know the research, but I'm gonna tell you, no matter what we assign, I do believe that the administration and our outstanding teachers will make it work. I wanna know what's best for our students. And I think I've heard a lot and I've seen a lot of the, and I've been in the classroom, social, emotional support that that our teachers provide, that is not, not dissing the administrators, that our teachers provide. I might say something, I couldn't do that now. I remember teaching third grade many, many years ago. And what I've seen our teachers do today, they have to be committed because they are outstanding.
Here's the, you, here's the tension that lies within me and appreciate your willingness to serve and be in the roles that you are, but the, the tension that is there is we talk about, we have this time, right? We have this time to set, if a decision is made, right? The, the longer it takes for a decision, then the shorter the timeframe is to get along with stuff. So you said the piece about, you said two things that, that were important, what, and I appreciate the faith you have in the staff to, to deliver, right? What is the site?
And administration too, I was
No, I, I, no, I, I think, I think we're all, I, I believe deeply in this district. We're all in it together.
Yeah.
Uh, that, um, so your piece about eighth grade and wanted to know what our support's gonna be there, right? If, if you're needing us to answer that before you make the decision, that's difficult. If you can believe that we can deliver that, then make the decision and say, gosh darn it, nation, if that's there. That's the tension that I just wanna put out there, right? And the way I see things are different in, you know, having, um, um, you know, a daughter in the elementary or a wife at the, at the, at, at the middle and, and working at the high school. The pressure and the intensity for parents is different than it's ever been. The, what parents are hearing from their world and community about they have to make the right choice and get to the right school and do the right this and the right that and the and the worry that, that, but, but that's real. And, and I think that's where fifth grade is different. That's where eighth grade is different. That you sit with a classroom of students who are some feel pressure that they should be doing more academic and less recess. And some feel the pressure that there should be more recess and more academic. And I think that, that is real, right? That we have an obligation wherever we land in this configuration, that we're given a charge to say, answer these questions and make sure this is it and whatever you deliver. And I agree with you, we will. But I think where it gets difficult is as we're doing our work and thinking about the future, needing to have a lot of answers before the decision is made, when we can't get to those answers until we know a decision is made and we can work with our staff and say, here's where we're going.
You know, I, I also wanna say, and I, and I said it clearly, I wanna repeat it. You know, because I know there's tremendous pressure. Is my kid in the right schools? My kid doing the right thing, whatever. When I was, my, my, um, doctors was it, like, the nurse practitioner has two, has two kids and found the school. Her husband makes those kids do, have been reading for his son and she's like, there are two of those kids. There is no perfect answer. I started saying that all the data doesn't say there's a correct way. This is what you have to do. It really depends on the location. It really depends on the resources. It really depends on the environment. And it also depends on the needs of individual students. And then
And as Henry noted,
I, I hope I can leave a family saying, there is no right answer. There is no perfect path.
As Henry noted, you know, in, in the studies and, and know, and share those with you, at the end of the day, it's less about where they are and more about following instruction, the care and relationship of the teacher and the supports that are there and access to opportunity. Where, whatever we do, we'll do that.
Okay. So I have to sum up? Okay, I'm a bit of a summarizer then for speakers, I hope, anyway. Um, that's sounding negative. I didn't, I didn't do that. Um, one thing I felt was a little bit weak in all the stuff was um, things that people alluded to was knowing your own kids and things about your own kids. So I think, um, we need some maybe we have parent input, but I don't see it here enough. So if we could reach out, we, um, we get more information from parents who uh, live with the current fifth graders of today. I mean, as old as I am, I can't imagine um, what it's like to have a uh, how old are they? Ten when they're at fifth grade? To have a ten year old kid. Um, we really need, we really need a lot of that perspective. The other thing too is there's not one kid's voice on here either. Um, I was hoping that we, I thought when we talked about this a while ago, we were gonna have some kids um, comments too. Um, I like the great, I, what Katrina said, that I'm setting up a room with tables and said, it seems like if you put them in the smaller groups and they converse, it's less confusing, um, and then compiling it all together. Maybe you could read. I, I think we had, Sonya, we had presentations like that when we were doing the grades, remember? Those, those seem to work. So, um, I, I just think we have more from those two groups that will be good. Um, and one thing though, that I'm really excited that people talked about wasn't Doc, Doc Harris mentioned too, was looking at start times. I think that's another big thing, um, that would help our high schools, all, all the students. So we could put some energy into the start time part of all that. And um, I guess too, when we consider national studies, we so need to think about what, how is Falmouth fitting into the world? Cause our, you know, we, we have our own town and, um, the dynamics. So I have a plenty of tech over there. We have the woods whole thing. We have just different things that we need to look at our, in the dynamics too. And okay, so that was my summary that I, I'm not, people said, okay. Um, does anybody wanna go for a second, uh, set of things? Uh, okay. Usually we start the other direction for perspective rounds. Anybody else have any?
She wants to start, maybe. Okay, okay. All right. Anything wanna jump the line? Um, when we had our meeting on August nineteenth, our last special meeting, we discussed a lot of things. I wrote down copious notes as I always do. Um, Eric, Terry, uh, I'm sorry, Chairman, Chairwoman, Maduros, I'm just gonna try to make that in one of the form. Um, had summarized our conversation saying people talked about having forums, staff input, having the principals come and speak to us, which we've had. Um, and student input and having more surveys. So those were the five things that you had listed out partly through that meeting. At the end of that meeting, we had a show of hands that was not a vote, but we all wanted to have a presentation from Dr. Doerr um, and your recommendation. You've given us your recommendation and your presentation. However, during this meeting, we also had, um, an agreement I thought that was largely, um, spoken to by, I, I think the majority, when I read through my notes, of wanting to have an even handed presentation. In other words, to see the pros and cons of both sides. Tonight's presentation only presented whether your recommendation was to have a go up. We did ask for a recommendation. We also asked though, for the presentation to show us the pros and cons of both options and we didn't get that. And so I think that's missing. Um, and, and that was something we had discussed and I think agreed on. So I, I think we still need that. Um, I don't think we're ready to take any action on this at our next meeting. I know that's standard to act after a presentation, but I don't think we're anywhere near that. I know we need to be done and ready by December. I'm, I don't know the date. Do you have a date for that or is MSBA not given any date? Or our deadline for when we have to have the grade configurations. December twelfth, okay. So we have some time. Um, I, what we spoke of at our last meeting and what we spoke into tonight, I think to me, it sounds like people are still talking about fifth grade. Um, and the recommendation has been made, but I think there's time now for additional surveys and um, further conversation and perhaps a follow-up presentation to show us the pros and cons of fifth grade moving down. Um, a couple of other things. I, so in regards to children being in fifth grade and then being more like seventh graders, um, that are, my colleague, um, said, um, I, I don't feel like we want to encourage sixth graders to be more like older kids. There are too many pressures already. Um, so I'm just organizing my thoughts. Um, another thing I noted was that it sounds a little bit like, um, how do I say this gently? Like we're we're wanting to use eighth graders moving into the high school as a Band-Aid to fix the retention issue. But the retention issue and, and as far as the data shows, it begins in seventh grade. People start leaving seventh grade. So in order to fix that, you have to go back further and make school more interesting in fifth and sixth grade. And offer these things, like I said in my previous comments, it's a Band-Aid. And when I look at a district like Wareham, they hemorrhage from seventh grade to twelfth grade. That's what the data shows. It's just an outpouring of students. I'm not I'm not saying that would happen here, but putting eighth or seventh grade into the high school doesn't necessarily guarantee that you're going to fix the retention issue because it's beginning earlier. To, um, Ms. Welch's comment about, that's a conversation about fifth graders being in elementary, but they're already middle schoolers. It's a bookending conversation, so it's about fifth graders being elementary or eighth graders being high school. It's code and, you know, the only grades that are not affected are sixth and seventh grade. So they are equally valid and there's not, um, I'm not sure exactly what that comment, um, meant really, but it was, um, it's not about adding seven to the fifth and sixth graders. It's about moving the fifth graders down or moving the eighth graders up. So. And a lot of people had also mentioned they want more data and I just want to reiterate that, uh, I think we need a follow-up meeting to talk about this more and, and, and we need more time, in other words. And just as a last thing, we have until December. We have until the December 12th and I would say that we can wait until November 18th if we wanted to, to make this decision, which gives us October and part of November to have these public meetings, to have this data collected, to have more presentations, to give an even hand the chance at both options, since we haven't had that yet. Um, and I mean, my tally of people who have expressed a preference, there's enough of us who want one and enough of us who want the other, that I think it merits, um, more time.
Oh, I'd like to just put for a second, I can't, I, I didn't want it to be misconstrued when they're voting on the 12th. They did indicate that it would be strong to have a school committee, um, have a decision. The 12th is their vote in December. They make decisions at the end of November. I, I just didn't want to be construed that you have up until December 12th, right? I'm also not going to say that you have to have one when you do. They just said that when it goes before a board, when they can say that the school committee has made a decision, it strengthens the application.
What, what did you say that November 18th would be a safe? When, no?
It, it said in November, I don't, I don't know, I don't have the details. I don't think that we're privy to that or, I just wanted to re-correct. I didn't know where you were going with that, the December vote. So I just wanted to correct what I was getting.
Again, though, then, so December 12th is when they inform us.
December 12th is when the, the board makes a vote.
Okay, and after that, they would then ask for a grade configuration? No?
We would have to know after that, what they, they said, that if the, if the school committee votes, it makes your application stronger going into a vote.
I see. All right, but we have October at least to have this process.
Yeah. Yes, yes, of course, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure they would walk away. I just wanted to clarify.
I think Linda and Mike, and Mike, I think Linda and.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I appreciated my colleague, Kelly Welch's, uh, perspective on what we are tasked with. It's, it's adding the seventh grade. So there are, the graders are already carefree sixth graders. So that, that's, that's what we're tasked with. So then we're going to move fifth graders down. Um, and I'm not arguing that fifth graders are not children. Of course, they're children as are ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders. But, you know, I've seen myself, third graders now are starting menstrual cycles. So fifth graders, you know, that they're well on their way and with the technology and it's, it's so, it's, it is a different, it is a different worlds. And I think we have to respect kids' maturity and the challenges that they need academically. And I think that this, this proposed configuration really respects the graders where they are.
I have two things. First, did you all get together and start deciding, call it a colleague? I like it. It's new.
Let me tell you.
Right? Um, my second question, you just came off with, uh, Dr. Dorr. Do we, I just, do we need to have the grade configuration by December? Or will the, you said make it stronger, but is it a necessity? Or, because I feel like it's a, a timeline that's being imposed by that company from the, we grew from the state up here, the MSBCA, that's why I'm discussing. Thank you very much.
Liz B.
So, and I guess my only question is that, are we required to have it other than strengthening the vote? We're not required to, right?
Required, oh, it said that they just indicated that it would strengthen, they turned the.
Thank you.
There any other questions about this?
You know, just kind of going back to Principal Harris's comment where, you know, not that, you know, we want to do our due diligence and take our time, but at the same point, there is a sense of, I don't know if I want to say urgency, but the longer we do wait, kind of the less time that we're giving, you know, our, our teachers and staff to properly prepare, whatever the decision is. So I think it is in our best interest to, um, to kind of move, move with purpose, um, at this stage. Just, just so we can, we can start, start making plans. I mean, I feel like either, either way we decide, you know, there are personal preferences on each, you know, argument. But, you know, it, it really did sound like, you know, whichever, you can decide, you, but there are pros and cons to each direction. And so really it's about spending the time, once you make a decision, to, to address the disadvantages of whatever, um, whatever decision you made, so, so.
Oh, I'm not doing this again. Are there anything else? Oh, no, that's fine, yeah, Margaret.
Yeah, um, if you didn't hear what I said, Katrina, I spent very long time talking about the advantages of fifth graders in elementary school, so that there were no pros and cons. I mean, the fifth grade is staying there, it's much stronger than sixth graders. And I didn't do it because I was challenged to, I'm doing, because this is what the data says. And, and, um, and I, I do want to say that there's no correct answers. We're looking for the right answer, this doesn't exist. Um, and I'm, I'm so glad you said that first, because I do think that, um, as Ellen said, the longer, the longer we wait to give them the answer, the less, the less opportunities they have in their operations. And although I have concerns either way, I think it's really important. I also want to say that, in fact, the next meeting, we're not, you're not going to make it go to that, you're not going to go to the next meeting, are you, Terry? At, at what next, the next, the next school meeting?
Regularly?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
There's another thing here, so I just wanted to say that what you need to do is follow the rules.
Okay, okay, if you haven't done your parliamentary job here, you've been away. You've been muddling along on your own without it.
I tried to get in and I couldn't get in, so, and I, I listened to everything that was like empty news.
Somebody catch my head up, but I don't know who that was. I'm only kidding you. Um, one thing I just want a kind of an answer about. In my opinion, the five through seven stuff is fuzzy-ish and I just want to have a statement. If we do decide the eighth grade and one, which sounds good, does that lock us in any way for the rest of the grades? I just think we need to know that, yes or no?
Can you say, oh, yeah, I'm not sure, I understood what you said.
If we decide the eighth grade, because it's good if we get started on it, um, does that lock us in for any, any of the other grade configurations? So I just, I just really need to know that. I mean, I, I temp, I want to vote for the eighth grade, also want to, I'm real fuzzy on the fifth grade in person, so I know that people must be. So I just want to know, does that lock in all the other grade configurations that have been muddled along?
So two, two things. I mean, our recommendation is that you have three grades together. And for all the reasons tonight that we've talked about, um, you know, it's, it's more supportive of having, you know, whichever, whichever grade you decide, right? If you have three grade configurations, see students go in, they have another year before they start preparing to go out. And it is, a three band is what is the most, um, school select that, that more often than, than anything is that you have three bands. If you think about it, if you have eight to five in one, and you had eight to 12 at the top, then you would have two grades in the middle. You would be spending six years in one school. You'd be going to a school that has two years, then you would be spending five years. They, they just don't have a time to really settle in into a school that's two years. And that is some of the, the concerns that have been shared, um, among the school committee members. Certainly, um, we have through the presentation is only if two schools are recommended. On top of that, when we submitted our statement of interest to the MSBA, we chose then it's going to be a three, uh, grade, uh, school. And that I do think, you know, was already voted on and decided that that's what it's going to be. What we didn't decide is what three grades. So I just, I just want to throw that out. Um, and that's what this conversation is about, what three grades should those be?
And by selecting three grades for the Lawrence School, that building can accommodate three grades. And that would enable this town to get a certain percentage reimbursement on the cost of renovating that building. Otherwise, we're on our own.
I, I, I do think that the town appreciates, you know, if we're going to renovate, that, that they have more, more changes in that, that building.
I have a follow-up question to what my colleague, Mrs. LaDusta, just said. I'm refreshing listening. I wanted to know, rough ideas, a poll question, I'd ask, the rough idea of what this would cost with the MSBA, like what the overall cost and what percentage they do? And then to break it down into the tax increase for the average household. Because I do think, before we go into a town meeting and then start doing all this research and planning and stuff, if it is unattainable, one of the things with retention, and if we increase taxes so much to fix that school that people are forced to leave town because they can't afford it, that has to be taken into consideration. So I know we don't have the actual numbers, but just an idea, like if it was, you know, 20 million, if it was 40 million, if it was 80, and then what that would cost each person, um, I'm just concerned with all this work that we're doing. The senior center was nine million and that was a pretty hefty haul to get that over. Um, of, of the committees working on that. So that would be my concern, we're doing all this work, and then when it comes down to an override, if it doesn't happen, then we've got to store it.
So I think we, I really want us to focus on two things. Are we not going to make these changes if we don't get the renovation? I mean, there's a lot of good reasons to make these decisions, renovation or not. So, I mean, that, that's one, right? Yes, we're looking at the renovation, um, and yes, that's a couple steps, a couple of years before we would find out. One, we need, we need to have an exact, um, cost and we gotta, we gotta get to the next level if we're accepted in the MSBA to know, um, what the cost is going to be. And then for the, uh, the, the MSBA to tell us what the percentage are. Right now, between 36 and 37% is what they're, they're, what they figure for Falmouth that they would give on the, the cost of this. So we don't know the overall number. Then, yes, we've, when we met with the town, they are fully prepared. Once we get set up, they're going to do all that, that numbers for us that you're just asking, right? What is it going to cost the taxpayer? Um, and, and there, the town, there is one that's going to do that, but they're not going to do that until we know what the number is. I will tell you that, uh, there was strong support from the town manager and the, um, CFO at the meeting with the MSBA, um, that they felt confident, um, in, in this process and confident that it would be supported. So, um, I think, I mean, that's, that's important to say that, that they are behind moving forward with this. But I still want to come back to, isn't this a discussion we should be having? Whether we get the renovation or don't get the renovation, because we know that Lawrence can handle three grades.
So to that point, if I could, Chairwoman Dearest, um, I am concerned in my, by the dutyary responsibility of this committee with the amount of tax dollars we are putting forward before we know what's happening. So for instance, the Morse Pond Town Meeting Exploratory Committee, that's a lot of money. And we as a committee have not voted to release Morse Pond. So again, this is, uh, to me, it's a lot of cart before the horse and it gets to a point that we're so bound to do something that we have to, it becomes a penny loss. So I don't know if this grade configuration makes sense. I believe that we were doing this for the MSBA, MSBA grant only. Now, if we don't get that grant, I don't know if that's the best decision. And I think that we're lumping way too much stuff together, spending money doing surveys before we actually know what we want to do.
So like, uh, our enrollment is declining. It is not necessarily responsible for us to continue to maintain seven buildings when we can move to six buildings. And so that's why I say, whether we get the renovation or not, I think we have a responsibility to consider that we have to have three grades into Lawrence and that we are going to, uh, release the, the, uh, Morse Pond back to the town. It's not dependent on MSBA. We, we should renovate, we need to renovate.
Yes.
Um, more, uh, the Lawrence School for all the reasons we talked about before. And yes, I know you, you like, you want to say it's not, but, but we, we have, uh, uh, there's lots of different moving parts. And one of them is, it's just, we can't maintain seven buildings when we don't have enough students that live in the seven buildings.
Yeah, but, but my concern is that we've never voted to release Morse Pond. And there are also other cost-saving things where the high school has space available. It would be much easier to move this building and these personnel into the high school than it would be to configure these grades and change the stuff. So I'm not, and I'm not saying that it's not a good idea. I'd like some more, more data, more information. My concern is that the town meeting article addressing the Morse Pond School, to see what the town's going to do with it, when we as a committee have not voted to give it up, is disheartening. And what's going to end up happening is that when it's so deep that we have to do something, we don't have to do anything. We have the luxury to actually take our time and say, what's best for the town? And that's my concern with all this rush, 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 rush. We need more information, we need to not put Band-Aids on it, we need to figure this out. And that's all I'll say, Charlie, okay?
So you say.
I know.
Well, I want to answer something before, Margaret.
I just wanted to say that you, that the Barnes building, as it is today, you can't throw another 20 years at that building. Yeah, that the, the plant destruction within that building, the steam pipes, the electrical system is small. Uh, it, it's not a lack. And so, you know, if you try to keep the, uh, grades in there without renovating, then you run a continuity risk in that building. That something goes, that, uh, and students can't go suddenly to that building. And now you, you're pushing grades out on an emergency basis. It, it, you know, so it, it, it's, it's not a question of is it nice to renovate the Lawrence? It really have to renovate the Lawrence in order to keep it as a school.
Can I respond? So I disagree.
You just said.
I know, but I lied. I disagree because we've never gone, I believe my colleague, Ms. Evans, and asked a year ago to get a proposal for a new building. And I know that doesn't include the MSBA money, but again, we don't have those numbers side by side and we can see what we're doing. I feel again, that the whole purpose of a lot of this is to save the Lawrence School. And I will be honest, at some point in time, things aren't worth saving and we need those numbers to figure out if it does make sense. Um, and now I'll be quiet again, Terry, it's been a while.
Okay, Margaret?
No, I've gone down this road because I believe that the equity audit, I argue, that we should have given it for us on now. Because that's the, this is responsible. Now, I've gone down and I've talked to Paul, I've talked to, you know, this building, it cost a tremendous amount and the town doesn't want it. Am I right? Yeah, you know, because I said, at the end of all, we should give this building away. And I've had long conversations with Paul, I talked to Dr. Dorr about this. The town doesn't want this building because it would cost too much, okay, to try to renovate this building. The town doesn't want this building because it would cost too much, okay, to try to renovate this building. Morse Pond seems to be the easiest building. And if we're talking about physical responsibility, and I don't have those feelings in my head because I'm an old lady, I did know how much it costs just to keep that building open every single year without talking about salaries for teachers, support staff, anything like that. It is costing the town a lot of money. So we're talking about giving that up. And the town has made a decision that they would wipe that building if we want to give it up. We don't have to. There's no one making us do that. But that is a building that seems to be reasonable that the town could be interested in. And it seems to be reasonable that the town would like to follow up on it. I don't think you made them, did you make them, uh, follow up on that? And, and, no.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, when they listen to all the meetings, they've decided that they pursue that and see if it's important, if it's valuable to them, if it's reasonably physically responsible.
Yeah, it's just a best interest study, that they want, want to look at what the possibilities are to use that, that building. And as far as this one, I have said it many times. We are ready to move out and move into any one number of schools that we could move into. Um, but it is a historic building, and the town has to figure out what to do with this building for us to move out. I think all of us would love to be in a school. We've talked about it many times. We would love to be in a school with kids.
Hmm.
But you can't let this building set in feet. And I have asked many times, what can the town do with this building? It's a beautiful building, but it needs a lot of work, whatever you do with it. And so, you know, so thi- this building, that's why it was never part of the conversation. Like, we're ready, we're ready to move when they, when they need it or want to do whatever they decide. But this isn't the building to focus on. As long as, and this isn't the building that's costing a lot to maintain every year as it is, right? About fifty thousand and it's about three hundred and fifty thousand for Morse Pond. So, just, you know, I'm just, just saying that, like, we can't, we, we have to, I, I disagree that we can't, you can't keep waiting and, and just not do anything. It's just not physically responsible. And Morse Pond will not hold three grades. I just want to throw that out. We talked about that before.
You know, kind of, Paul gave me, um, a good discussion about why this building should go up. Because I, I have gone through it, this building we should give up. And Paul, you would have a good conversation for the vote. I have concerns about giving up this building.
Well, I, I, I mean, the, the, in terms of sorry, just for mention, like, it's, I would consider it a nineteen twenties building to, something that's, uh, you know, useful for the town for a channel. You know, it's not keep, uh, ADA-friendly building number one. Um, you know, uh, if it was town offices, you'd have difficulty, the town members coming from one floor to the other. It's, it's an arduous building. If you reconfigure this building, you're gonna have to redo all the piping, walls, the electrical. Uh, it, this is, this building is much worse shape than the Lawrence, and Lawrence has its challenges.
So how much would it cost to redo this building?
Why? I, I mean, I, I don't.
You can't reconfigure this building.
I, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I can't, and we really have to be careful about throwing figures around.
Okay.
It's one of the, one of the problems, and I can understand Mike's point. But, you, you know, so much depends on the design of a Lawrence renovation. And the MSBA process is a really disciplined process. It takes eight years to go through the MSBA process. And it, and it's done that way so that towns don't end up by having , uh, always spend on a building. They want you to be really disciplined over that period of time. And in that time, the first couple of years, you're doing the design process. You, the first two million dollars you're spending is on the initial design. Uh, and, and so that you can come to an estimate. Because any number that we give you today is, has no factual basis. You know, we did do a, a building assessment. Uh, that big, uh, it associates did the building assessment, but, you know, it said it'd take a hundred million dollars to bring the building to code. But that doesn't move a wall inside the building. And these classrooms are outdated. Uh, so I, you know, we can't, I, I, it would be so improper for me to even go down that road to try to get a, a real assessment. We had put a placeholder on a capital plan for, you know, for the purpose of trying to have something, but it's, it's, it's nothing that you, you know, anybody could take to the bank. It's too early in the process. That's what the first two million dollars. And I, every time a pandemic comes up from the capital plan, I keep yelling, you know, that is not a real number. You know?
Paul, did you want to say?
No.
Any other?
Um, I have, I have a motion, actually. But, no, not yet.
We'll know that we can take more motions.
Drop it.
During this.
It was just related to the special meetings that we are planning, that we are in right now. And I told it our last regular meeting, that I did not bring up a motion relating to special meetings during a regular meeting. So here I am in a special meeting, bringing up a motion relating to our future special meeting.
Okay. It's hard to argue with that because there's a lot of motions. So, um, parliamentarian, parliamentarian, need some help. Can we make a motion during a discussion?
It's, also, just for reference, it's just about scheduling. It's not about content.
Uh, we can't, we have not historically voted a motion before we heard the motion at a previous meeting. That has been the process with all this stuff. You know, like, we hear information, you know, and then at the next meeting, we can vote.
Okay, that's at the first read.
Yeah, so you're the first read.
That's true.
You're the first read. We always do it first read.
Can you make a request or further information or something to add?
Not to make a motion, because the motion is that I would like us to have a discussion about the unfoldment of our schedule for this timeline, not for the grade configuration. We know we need to have that before the beginning of November. That's clear. It's not to do with that. It's to do with the other parts of navigating future, which, by the way, are not on our agenda, but we've just discussed them at great length.
Okay.
So, I, I feel like it's within the limits of the meeting, especially given that we've all learned you were looking at our, everybody's, um, but I don't need to be contentious and anxious, but I want us to have a chance to.
If you would stop and say your motion based on what Margaret's suggestion, because that's what you suggested, right?
We would vote on it at the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
The next, which meeting, regular meeting?
The next school meeting, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Right, so the motion be that we would schedule a special meeting specifically so that we can discuss and set our timeline for all of our future meetings relating to the other aspects of navigating the future, not grade configuration. This would be a follow-up to our August nineteenth special meeting where we discussed the process for making these decisions. And now the next step is for us, as a committee, to discuss and set our own timeline for when conversations will take place. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
No?
Well, yeah.
I want to.
Well, I, I made it over before the next meeting, so. So, okay.
Where are you gonna be to go from?
What your motion is, because it will appear in the next meeting. Right, Margaret?
Yes, but since I will not be at the ne- next meeting, because for a year I have planned a vacation. I'm going away and having a good time if it's happening. Um, so I just would like to tell you, if you have a motion and you vote on it, and since there will be eight people, if the motion is sworn in for, which I hope it would not be, but if it is, immediately after the vote, someone could say, I wish to change my vote. If any business transpires after the vote, you cannot then change your vote. Okay? So suppose people vote, you know, four and four, and all of a sudden someone says, wait a minute, I might want to change my vote. They have to do it immediately. You cannot do anything else. Otherwise, you can't change your vote.
I, I have to look that up again, because I thought it was if you, you can't bring it up in the next meeting, but I thought you could bring it up during the meeting where it would happen. If all, if you're on the losing side, is that what I'm referencing?
Absolutely.
That's reasonable.
We can research that offline. This is how we got in trouble.
All right, all right, all right.
We will research that stuff.
I, all I want to do is schedule a meeting where we figure out our timeline, because we, all we did was the process. We didn't do the.
Right. And we did accept that motion.
No, I don't think we did, is it?
Do we have to do?
It will, it will appear at the, the parliamentarian, so the way that we do it is that it will appear next to vote on the next meeting.
So we don't have to second it in order for it to be a motion?
Yeah. Or you should see it's been simple. And the.
We've never done it this way. That's why I'm confused. I'm sorry. I'm still confused right now.
Well, okay, let me rephrase it for you. Um, Katrina made a motion, which
Which always has to be.
Will you let me finish this? Katrina made a motion, and based on Margaret's parliamentary knowledge and research that she's done, it, it automatically will happen at our next meeting, and then we vote on it. And Margaret was explaining what could happen if the vote were tied. So, the, the, the description of the motion, someone who took notes will be given to read. It will be on our agenda for the next time. Okay?
Okay, so it'll just be added as an agenda.
Right, right, right.
I have a question, uh, for our friend, Terry. Uh, for people that at any meeting who are going to be there or not be there, could they stand there, go in, you know, or, um, zooming in or
No.
if you zoom in, you're, pardon me, if you zoom in, you're.
If you zoom in, you can.
Yeah.
I would be the both.
Okay, so we've got a little, um, hery in our, but that's okay. We, we worked it out, and that's the bottom line. So, um, are there any other comments or requests for anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. I know I jumped them off.
No, this is not a big thing. I just wanted to point out that moving eighth grade to the high school requires a lot more planning, what Alan, what Dr. Dr. Harris talked about, requires a lot more planning than moving the fifth down. And I just wanted to, um,
That's your shame, okay.
That is my thing. And I, I'll just stay to the things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to adjourn? Can I use that? Now we got, wait for a second.
I knew you were gonna say that. I was gonna.
I'll just favor, I we didn't hear any abstentions earlier.
Okay, top of the night.